Hello, welcome. We're recording this interview today as part of the Democratic Party of Evanston's endorsement process. For those of you who have been members for a long time, you typically know that we usually hold our endorsement meeting in a big, in a big room down at the Unitarian Church. And unfortunately, we're unable to do that this year because of, you know, the coronavirus and limitations on group meetings. So we're doing these virtually. We're going to take about half an hour to sit down with some questions for Biz Lindsey Ryan, who is currently on the District 65 School Board and is running for reelection this term. So why don't we, just to start off, take a minute or two and tell everybody about yourself? And just sort of introduce yourself to our members who aren't familiar with you.
Sure. Hello, everyone. My name is Biz Lindsey Ryan. I have been an Evanston resident since 2003. I have three kids in the school district. I have one at SHOOT and two at DAWZ. And I'm an equity, diversity, and inclusion consultant professionally, and I am really committed to our students having an equitable experience. And so I've worked with a lot of different organizations and schools and school districts in my professional life. And actually, District 65 was a client of mine for five years. So I feel like I have, part of my joining the board was because I understood where some of the obstacles were. And what I, you know, I felt it was a really important time. I came on the board when they were searching for a superintendent. And I thought that was probably one of the more important things a board can do is selecting a good superintendent for the district.
Okay, thank you. So the first couple of questions, probably unsurprisingly, are going to be around coronavirus. So District 65 has a program in place to provide technological assistance to students who don't have what they need for remote learning. Do you believe that the accommodations provided have been adequate? And what changes, if any, would you like to see made to that program?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's ever evolving. I think, you know, in last February, we certainly weren't talking about tech needs being one of the most important things that we have to consider as a board. And so when we, and even when we closed initially, we weren't sure how long that was going to last. And so the solutions that were generated for a couple of months of last school year were not going to meet the needs of a longer term closure. And so, you know, I really commend our staff. They have done so many different things in surveys and reaching out and, you know, calling individual families to see that their tech needs were met. You know, I think in terms of devices, it should be that everybody is, has coverage at this point. And we even went from coverage in the home with one device to a one-on-one situation that everybody has their own personal device to work with. That still doesn't address some of the spotty internet and challenges there. We've gotten out hundreds of hotspots. But I think one of the things that has emerged and something that I raised when we met with our city liaison committee is that we probably need to think about an internet solution for our town that is more robust and can handle some of these things. It really, you'll find, I think, in a lot of the conversation about the pandemic, the lack of national leadership has really put our school board and our town at an extreme disadvantage to try to solve all sorts of problems that were, you know, historically beyond the scope of the role of the school board. And so I'm really grateful for all of the hard work our educators have done to get devices to folks to try to solve IT issues as they come up. I think our IT folks were taking hundreds of calls a day in the beginning. And now I really think we're, we've met most of the needs and we've done professional development for teachers so that they know how to use all the technology. I really feel like we have done our best effort. I think the greatest challenge always is that when we are not successful reaching out to families, we are not always aware of what their needs are. So as far as the needs we know about, I think they've been addressed at this point. But, you know, as we continue to watch and monitor numbers of students that are not participating at the rate that we would like them to, then we have to look deeper into whether that's a tech obstacle or what the other challenges may be.
Okay. So you mentioned that some of that would be outside of the scope of the school board. Is that something that you've worked with our current city council to provide some of those solutions? Or is that something that you feel could be improved in this upcoming term?
Yeah, and I will not, I will not position myself as a tech expert, so I apologize if I muddle some of the descriptions. But in our, in our conversations about it, it seems like there's a couple of different pathways for making sure that internet access is robust in our town. And some of them are much more labor-intensive, time-intensive, cost-intensive. And so I think some of the ideal long-term solutions weren't really possible on the timeline that we needed them. So I think, you know, our collaboration with 202 and our collaboration with the city leveraged what we could for this moment and negotiating with companies and trying to get the best rates possible and trying to get as much tech out to folks as need be. But I do think when we're not in a pandemic and we're not in crisis mode, I do think it's really important for our town to have a larger conversation. So it's not one entity's job to solve, because I think, you know, we need to leverage Northwestern as a partner. Everyone would benefit from having better internet access and better technology access in town. And I think that we, I'm proud of what we accomplished under pretty intensive restraints. But I do think that, you know, once things have stabilized, it's really important for us to figure out long-term solutions.
Okay. So with the move to a hybrid format for the coming months, what steps do you believe the board should take to ensure that the students who are on each of the different learning pathways, the options that they have available to them, aren't falling behind the students who have taken a different learning pathway?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to recognize that I don't know that there's any more serious decision-making processes a board has had to do than making decisions about opening schools when the stakes are so grave. I, you know, I think that we are seeing online learning being an improvement for some students. Some students are doing better in this situation, and we really need to explore what was not working about our current structure that students would be doing better. Now, you know, I do think that this gives us, as difficult as the pandemic is, it gives us an opportunity to reimagine our schools and to not go back and create the same problems that existed already. We have some serious challenges in our district. And so I think it's really important for us to reimagine how we do school and the ways that we can more effectively reach kids that school's not working for. Certainly, our special needs population and folks that are having challenges with internet access and a host of other obstacles make it very difficult to learn in this environment. And so I still think it is appropriate for that to be family choice, that that's not up for me to determine the math for your family as to whether it's the right decision to go remote or whether the right decision is to be in person. We want to try to give those options to everyone and let them make the best decisions for their family. But then we're going to need to see, you know, certainly there's been identification of categories that we see as students that may not thrive in this environment as much and wanting to provide the priority for them to be in school if they want to be in school. But if the families are choosing not to be in school, then we need to make sure that the remote system is working as effectively as possible. And so, you know, it's not an either/or, it's a both-and. We have to analyze and evolve on how all of our students' needs are met all the time. And I think the learning curve has been tremendous in this period. And I say that not because we didn't know things before, but we have not had to function in this kind of context. And I, I think we have learned a lot and we're going to need to continue to analyze that data. And once, you know, once there are these kind of, once, if we open and there's an in-person option, then we'll have a better comparison of kind of what are the parameters, what are the obstacles for kids in either scenario. And I do think that there'll be some recalibration that needs to happen. There'll be some kids that thought they wanted to go in person, that it ended up not being a good decision for, or some people that stay remote, that we, you know, we will have to work and strategize on ways to get more students back if their needs change or their desires change.
Okay. That ties right into my next question then, which is, what criteria do you think should be used when you're evaluating the current plan as it moves forward for any changes that need to be made for it?
I mean, first and foremost, safety has to be at the center. You know, I think for me, you know, and my board colleagues, we have really stayed focused on, you know, staying as current as we can with research and have been cautious, right? I will defend our decision to be cautious with people's lives any day of the week. You know, what is, what is emerging from this pandemic is people are learning lots of things, which is great. But it's much easier to hindsight, say, well, it should have been this or it should have been that, without having kind of access to all of the information and nuance that was there. And also, I think anybody that is saying they have the right answer for how decisions in a pandemic should go is, I would be a little wary of, right? Because none of us have had the information we need to make the decisions that we need to throughout the process. We're all evaluating a set of choices that are not without consequence, right? There are consequences to being in school, there are consequences to staying remote. And, you know, for me, because I've worked with our district for so long and I, because I work with climate teams in each building and I've done professional development for probably about 80% of our staff, when we're making those decisions in terms of educators, I'm imagining the faces of those principals, those teachers, and I want them to be safe. And when I'm imagining students and families, right? I've been a Girl Scout leader and softball coach and a basketball coach, and I'm imagining those kids and families and what the obstacles are for them. It's very real to me. We're a small enough community that these are not decisions that are made without really understanding the gravity for real people with all of the decisions that we make. And so, you know, I think, I think we will have to continue to follow recommendations from IDPH and from ISBE, right? So our initial strategies were around a 3% positivity rate, because that's what the research was saying when we were making decisions for September. That has evolved now, because we've had the opportunity of watching other districts go back and seeing what works and what doesn't. That was, you know, this, by October, I think it changed to about an 8% metric that we were working from. But at that point, the rates were and stayed over 8%. IDPH recently increased that number to 12%. And so we will continue to follow what the recommendations are from those entities. We, you know, we certainly have had medical professionals and representatives in the medical field in the planning process. But, you know, again, this is where I would point to like, lack of federal leadership has really put schools in a position where we shouldn't need our own team of doctors. We shouldn't need our own team of researchers. It's not how we solve cancer or how we decide to go to war or any other major national decisions. And so, you know, I think we are in consultation with all of the players that should be, but not trying to replicate those efforts by assuming that we have better insight or information than the Illinois Department of Health or Illinois State Board of Education.
Okay. So when you talked about, you know, the criteria that you're going to be using to evaluate moving forward, I just wanted to ask specifically, was there a plan to address any potential disparity, you know, between the economically or racially disadvantaged students in the district versus those in more privileged households?
Yeah, equity continues to be at the center of all of our planning. Our hope and the way the numbers are looking is that, based on people's preferencing, we should be able to get most people to be, to have the opportunity to do what they chose in their preference thing. That with the exception of a couple of buildings, the numbers work out where if you said you wanted to be in person, you will likely be able to be in person. And the hybrid model does give us the opportunity to have more people have access to that, while at the same time, those folks that are identified as priority for various reasons, get, you know, in elementary school, will get a full-day option so that they, that those needs can be met. So there's, there's a, you know, a consideration of how do we make sure we, you know, it goes without saying that like, this is a terrible period for everyone, right? This is a, is a very, it's a very challenging time for all of us to navigate. And I, you know, I think it's really important for us to never take lightly the way people are suffering, for us to never assume that we have all the answers and all the solutions for the ways in which, you know, people are struggling right now. With that, you know, it's important for us to continue to have as clear a metrics we can have about the decision-making and then recognize that they're going to evolve and change, and we will communicate those as they do. Like you'll get a communication about the 12% soon, because that just recently happened, right? So it's important for us to make sure that as many kids as possible who want to be back get to be back in a way that is safe, right? So our constraints are, how many educators do we have available? How many, how many, how much space do we have in the building? How many people chose to come back? And then what are the priority needs of folks in those, in that population? And it's a super complicated matrix to figure out all of those things out, building by building. But I really trust our administration and our educators who have been working tirelessly to try to figure out the way to get the maximum amount of folks who want to be back back in as safe a way as possible.
Okay. So moving away from COVID a little bit, several years ago, District 65 passed a funding referendum. It was actually a referendum that the DPOE membership endorsed and we campaigned for. I wanted to hear your thoughts on the current state of the District 65 budget and current and future priorities. What do you see as the biggest financial challenge faced by the district? And what would you like to see the board do to address the projected deficits?
Yeah, and as we, you know, this is an area in which we've, from the moment I've joined the board, I've, and I'm not saying not before that as well, but every conversation we've been in has been very transparently leading us to the point where we're going to have an economic issue. This has been, since the referendum passed, we knew that was not going to cover costs. We have a structural deficit that was not offset by the referendum. And so we had a timeline in which we were going to have to make some pretty substantial changes by. The pandemic has just escalated that date. So where we, you know, where we might have had two to three years to sort some of these things out, now we have one to two years to sort some of these things out. But that, but it's not a new financial challenge. And, you know, essentially, we're finding ourselves, our current estimates are about $10 million short of where we need to be for long-term financial sustainability. And so, you know, we are going to need to really consider every option. And if any of you attended our last finance meeting, we really tried to out-of-the-box think about all sorts of things, not in a, you know, not in a way that those, the things that came up in that meeting are for sure what's going to happen. There'll always be a public discussion about these things. But we're going to have to look at, we have many aging buildings that cost millions, that need millions of dollars in repairs. You know, we have an excellent educator workforce that we want to continue to see thriving, and the costs of that are significant. You know, we spend several million dollars on busing. You know, there's a lot of different pieces. And I think, you know, for me, the biggest piece in what needs to come next is making smart decisions, right? It's not always, you know, it's not saying we're going to cut 20% across the board, because maybe 20% less on this issue now means that that thing can't be successful at all, and the other 80% is now a waste of money. I worked with an organization that, at one point, you know, they were spending a ton of money renting technology, and they decided to buy the technology, of course, for a year or two. That investment costs more money, but over time, that might be the larger, you know, more successful strategy. So I, you know, I think we need to look at every aspect of our budget. We need to look at, you know, our central administration, we need to look at our buildings, we need to look at, you know, capital projects, facilities issues. You know, our goal is to make those cuts with the least impact on students possible. You know, we really do not want the student experience to suffer. And so we're going to have to get really creative to think about where are the places where we're just not being as efficient and as smart as we could be? And where are the things that we're going to have to prioritize along the way? But, you know, I think that our, our opportunity to achieve is a place that, you know, we have felt really has not been reflective of the values and commitments of Evanston. And so we, you know, we need to continue to invest in making sure that we do not have disproportionate outcomes for Black and Brown students in our, in our community.
Okay. So do you feel that the budget process at District 65 is as transparent and accessible as it could be, both to the parents of the students and to the community at large? If any changes would you like to see made to the budgeting process?
And I think there's a plethora of information that's available. Whether that is accessed is a different challenge, right? And I think that that's a, you know, once you transition to a board member, if you check out some of the Facebook pages or different things, you recognize like how much information people are not getting correct, right? And some of that is, you know, always something that we can do better in the way that the board communicates or the way the administration communicates. But a lot of it is the information is available. You know, we have open finance meetings monthly. You know, we have been discussing this issue of needing significant cuts for, you know, a year, year and a half, two and a half years maybe. And so, you know, I think that some people don't find finance meetings riveting, right? They don't find the engagement is not always bringing a huge crowd to the conversation. But I think as we look at the priorities for our district, there's no way we can do those things without having the financial backing to do so. So I would hope that people are getting more engaged. There's a new thing that just is coming out today, tomorrow, called Thought Exchange, where we really want to hear from everybody, their ideas and their thoughts about what should be the priorities of our budget. We, as a board, our job is to represent our district, but we don't want to do that without input. We want to hear from people about what they value and what they're willing to sacrifice. Would they, do they want to have more buildings open? Or do we need to consider higher-class enrollment? Do we need to consider, you know, eliminating busing? Like, everything needs to be something we consider. In the midst of this, we also need to address that we don't have program alignment on all the things that we need to. And we need to have a fifth ward school. And so that's where that smart decision, it's not always just cuts, right? It's about what are our values, what is important to us, and how do we make sure those are the guiding principles that help us make the decisions about what to do about our financial situation?
Okay. With that last answer, you actually cut ahead of me a little bit here. My, one of my questions upcoming was to address the issue of a fifth ward school. So there's a group of activists here in Evanston who'd like to see District 65 open a school in the fifth ward. I wanted to just hear your thoughts about that, that issue specifically.
Sure. Yeah, and, you know, I've been fairly consistent in my conversations that I've had with them or on this topic. I do believe there needs to be a fifth ward school. I do believe that it is not, that the current obstacle is not at all will or belief. It is largely financial, and so we have to get creative and think about how we can finance that. And that's not to suggest that a fifth ward school should only happen if we can balance our budget and do everything else like that. That's a priority. We have to sort that out. We have, have, there have been generational impacts based on the decisions that we've made about not having a fifth ward school and closing schools and busing students and how we diversify our schools. And I think that that burden has been disproportionate on the African-American community and the Latinx community, and we need to rectify that. And part of, so it gets parlayed with the financial discussion, because the immediate question is then, how do you pay for it? But I, but I think they are both separate and conjoined topics of, this is, if we value in our town, if we think that a neighborhood school is valuable, then we need to have a neighborhood school available to everyone. I think one of the things that we have to look at in this next term is program alignment. We have programs like TWE and ACC and specialized programs that exist in some buildings, but it isn't possible for every student to go to their neighborhood school and get everything that they need. And so we need to probably, you know, reimagine how that delivery of service happens. And in that conversation, it's going to need to be thinking about how we district schools and how we provide resources in every building.
Okay. So on the, on that, on that topic of, you know, equality and equity, one of our members had a question. As Democrats, we believe in a commitment to racial justice and equity. What have you done to center students who are part of historically marginalized communities?
Yeah, so probably one of the things I'm most proud of is I have spent the last four years working on the PTA Equity Project. Some of people may know a lot about that, some people may not know anything about it. But essentially, I was one of the people who started this process, saying, I think there's a significant disparity in the resources available at schools based on parent fundraising, that PTAs provide field trips, enrichments, after-school programs, all sorts of phenomenal things. And yet, that based on people's address, they could go to a school that has very limited choices to no choices in that space or very robust choices. And so the PTA Equity Project has worked for the last four years, initially redistributing funds from higher resource schools to lower resource schools, and in December, agreeing to have one PTA fund for all the entire district and using an equitable formula to distribute that out to schools based on student need. And I think it has a potential to really transform kind of the out-of-the-classroom experiences that make up so much of our climate and culture within schools and make up so much of the opportunities that people see and the potential they see for themselves later on. PTA fundraising is not, you know, there's lots of different pieces. But what I appreciated about that project is the group said, this is the place we can do something. This is a concrete way to make change, and we can focus in this space and make change here. And so I think examples like the PTA Equity Project, like the folks that are advocating for fifth ward school, those are not, I had this idea and we accomplished it three days later. It takes long-term investment, it takes people willing to do the hard work and have the difficult conversations. And, you know, I, I'm disappointed that my kids are Cubs fans now, because to me, being a Cubs fan is all about optimism, it's all about working towards a future you may never see in your lifetime. My dad was at the World Series in the 40s and never saw the Cubs win. And, you know, so for me, it's not, we want to change all of these things tomorrow. It's okay, how do we dream big and reimagine what we can do? And then get down to work and strategize and make plans and make progress to make those things a reality. And I think, you know, my work with the PTA Equity Project is a good example of persevering through all the resistance and, you know, working to change people's beliefs and values so that that can be something that every school supports, even the schools that, you know, will have less financial resources than they did before we agreed to come together. And COVID was another example of that group raised $500,000 to get immediate resources out to families through principals and social workers through COVID, recognizing that that was disproportionately impacting our Black and Brown students. We wanted to get hands, money in people's hands as quickly as we could, and we knew that we had money in reserves and resources and relationships that we could leverage to not solve that problem indefinitely. We're not a nonprofit agency, we're not going to be able to address the federal and state structural challenges, but at least do whatever we could within our capacity when we could do it.
Okay. So I'd like to finish with some questions about your time on the board. When you first joined the school board, what was your number one priority? And do you feel that you've achieved that goal?
I think one of the things that was a primary goal to me has been kind of work in progress for a little bit that is hard to evaluate in a pandemic. But racial disparity and discipline was a, was a big priority to me. Working with our school climate teams and, you know, seeing our disproportionate numbers of who is getting disciplined in our building, I really felt like we had white students experiencing schools in a way where they were kind of seen as inherently innocent and Black students seen as inherently suspect. And then their, all of their experiences from there got more and more disparate. And so I think changing our relationship with our SROs, you know, really reimagining our discipline policy, investing in restorative practices, all of those things were moving the needle. And if you look at some of the data, you know, we were seeing some progress in that space before we closed schools. Obviously, it's difficult to compare what that data looks like in a remote setting than it does in a school building. But I think that that's something that both my investment as a consultant before I came on the board and what some of the decisions the board made before I came on, and then the continued conversations have really, have the potential to have significant impact. You know, people can't learn if they are feeling, you know, if they aren't feeling welcome and included and respected and valued. And so all of those things that deter folks from feeling like they belong in a place affects academic performance, affects every aspect of their school experience. And so I think that's a critical piece that will affect the opportunity to achieve as well.
So you feel that's a, that's a goal that you, that you achieved in your time, or is that?
Yeah, I'm not a person that is going to say, I did that all and checkbox, it's done. I believe that we have made significant progress. And I, and I believe that some of that was in motion before I joined, and some of that has continued on since I've been on the board. I think we have consistently felt like that was an important, you know, and this was before some of the conversations about defunding police and some of the other larger national conversations emerged, not before they existed, because white supremacy has existed for a long time. And the relationship between the African-American community and police have been conflictual for a long time and unjust. And so, but I think that this is, you know, we were, we were already working towards reimagining what that, what that police relationship looks like in schools before George Floyd.
Okay. So which of the, which of the board's decisions do you most disagree with? You've been on the, on the board for some, for a few years now.
Well, I will say this, and it will seem like a non-answer, but it's actually an answer. I feel like our process is, I really appreciate the process that happens with our board, and I really appreciate my board colleagues' commitment to students and families. And while we may not always agree on the how, we are all pretty consistent in how we prioritize and what we value in terms of how educators are treated and how, and how students are treated. And so there have not been many opportunities where there has been significant conflict. And often, if there's been diverging opinions, we are able to have a really collaborative dialogue that usually results in folks coming to a consensus. There's been very, I think maybe one or two votes that have not been unanimous in the entire time that I've been on the board. So there isn't, there aren't these lightning rod things where I say, I was right or they were right. Like, we, we have engaged really thoughtfully with each other and have that conversation pretty robustly so that when we get to that deciding-making point, it's not that people don't have any idea what is being decided or don't have an understanding of what the issues are and often are able to see that there's a, there's a, you know, it's not that there's no path without consequences, but that there's a clear way, when we're thinking and focusing on equity and we're focusing on student experience, often the decision is clear and we all agree on it.
Okay. And as a, as a counterpoint to that, which of the decisions of the board do you feel that you're most proud of?
I think probably the thing that we've done that I'm most proud of in this period is hiring our superintendent. It was a, it was an important process. You know, I think that it is vital to have leadership that understands what is at play for our students and is willing and is willing to make hard decisions that are sometimes unpopular to do what is right. And I think, you know, you, you, you're never going to get 100% approval rating. And certainly you're not going to get that in a pandemic. But a superintendent that comes in and was working, you know, tirelessly before this contract even started and, you know, hit the ground ready to, to make really important decisions and prioritize, you know, I believe the right things, I think has proven to be one of the better decisions that our board has made.
Okay, and as a final question, what is your number one priority for the upcoming term? And what specifically do you think it'll take to make it happen?
I, I think, you know, the priority in the, in the immediate future has to be the safe return to schools. And I think that that's, we all want to have students and educators be able to be in space together in a way that, that is safe. And so whenever that is, that's going to be the priority for, for a while. I think the next piece, once that is functional and sustainable, is to really see what, what the costs have been for our students and, and really make sure that we are putting robust plans in place, so that whatever learning loss has happened or whatever, you know, disparate impact is happening, that we have plans to, to eradicate that as quickly as possible. You know, I think that we're, the goals that we had before the pandemic are still there, right? The opportunity to achieve still has to be addressed, right? Disparity and discipline still has to be addressed, all of those things. But I think that they are all exacerbated by the pandemic. And so we're going to need to keep our foot on the gas on all of those priorities and, and make sure that just because we can't compare apples to apples on data in, you know, in ways that we, you know, we've been following these, these metrics for, for years on a couple of different topics. We're going to have to figure out how do we analyze this information? How do we identify what the challenges are and how do we fix those things as quickly as possible?
Okay, so thank you very much for your time. We had one question in the chat while, while we were speaking, and I'm going to ask you that one real quick. And then if you're willing to stick around for a few minutes, I'll unmute everybody. And if you'd like, you can take some questions from the audience. So Kai asked, what physicians or, and clinicians have advised the D65 board? I understand that many have offered to advise and help, and they feel they've been ignored. Is that true?
Yeah, I mean, I, from my engagement, I don't think they've been ignored. I think we have, you know, every email that comes in, we, you know, we thoughtfully consider, we thoughtfully reply, we take into account, you know, what, what they're concerned about and how that may impact our planning. You know, I, I think that there's, as I said earlier, you know, I, I do think we have to be careful about recreating other systems that, that, that we don't necessarily need to have our own pool of physicians advising us when we have IDPH and is being other folks that are, that are tasked with that job for the state. You know, I, I come from a slightly different background in that I have a counseling degree. And, you know, it, it is important that we as counselors do not counsel our family members, right? Or our friends, because we have a vested interest in that outcome. And so, you know, I think it is important for us to, to hear from medical professionals and it's important for us to be in constant conversation with those folks. But I don't think it automatically makes someone appropriate because they have a child in the district, because they're going to be influenced, like all of us can be, based on the things that we hope to see happen. And so, you know, we're relying on data and research and, and that isn't, is not malleable. And when, when, when folks are bringing to us the other, the articles they're seeing or the research they're seeing, we're evaluating that and we're taking that into consideration. That's why our positivity rate numbers have changed from 3% to 8% and are going to change to 12%, because the data exists to say that, that, that is appropriate. You know, I, I think that, that, and there's been some meetings with the administration with local physicians. It's not that it hasn't happened, but I think that it's not a lack of engagement with the medical community to not say that any, any, just like any topic, any teacher that volunteers, we don't automatically put them in charge of curriculum. There's a, you know, that we, we trust the experts that we have and we, and we are in collaboration with whatever agencies we need to, to make sure that we're making sound decisions for our district. And, and their input is, is heard and considered.
Okay, just before I open this up to the floor, I just wanted to remind everybody that the DPOE membership endorsement vote will begin, ballots go out on January 17th. And the voting system will be sent out in an email to all of our members. So if you aren't a member yet, you can go onto our website, sign up for membership. And, and you'll be able to vote to endorse later on this month. So I'm going to unmute it for the floor and we've got about 10, 15 minutes here before I have to, before I have to leave and start up the next, start up the next interview. So here we go, you all have, now have the ability to unmute yourselves. Just try to keep it, you know, try to refrain from speaking over each other. So. All right, I'm not sure if anybody has any questions?
I was waiting to see if anybody else did, but I do have a question if no one else wants to go first.
Go ahead, it looks like your first one to unmute.
Okay, I appreciate that. And to start off, serving on the school board takes a lot of time. And, you know, thank you very much for your commitment to the students in the school district and, and doing what, you know, you think is best. That doesn't get said enough. Sure, and I, I wanted to go to the question about the budget. You know, I heard something really important you said, which is true, that the referendum didn't address the structural deficit. It did have, you know, a certain amount of time when the dollars would run out. I do think there's something really important for people to keep in mind that I, I'd be curious to hear your thoughts on. And that is, in prior contracts, the teachers, and my mom's a public school teacher, teachers need to be paid great, not even just fairly, but great.
I don't think there's any current at homeschooling that is not, that is in disagreement with you about that, Richard.
Yeah, I'm sure. And in, previously, the compensation increases year over year had been tied to the rate of inflation. And the current board negotiated that clause out of the teacher's contract. So instead of being able to tie historically low inflation rates to the teacher compensation increase, now we just have a set number that averages around, I think it's a little over 4% a year. Now, in the second year of inflation being, you know, at or under 1%, and we're giving 4% increases. Don't you think it's accurate to say that while we were in a bad situation, that pivotal choice with the largest portion of the district expenses has made things worse than they were before?
You know, that's, I, I was not one of the board members involved in the negotiating process, so I want to be transparent about that. You know, I, I think, as always with our contract process, there are lots of decisions on the table. And there are lots of things we went on and things that we lose on. And I, I trust that when that bargaining team was creating that, that contract, that, that, hopefully with interest-based bargaining, that the student experience was the priority in that conversation and in those decisions that were made. You know, I think that we have, because that happened before I was on the board. A lot of that has, we've had some other contracts come up and that certainly our fiscal situation is part of all of our decision-making with contracts moving forward. Certain, in, in, in the recent past, but I, but I would imagine that it was not a situation where the school board just gave in on all pieces, but that there were some trade-offs in that, in that process that then made, that offset some of those things. And I don't, I don't have that information in front of me to determine what those were exactly.
Sure, yeah, and I appreciate that. You know, I, I know that the contract was signed for the first time in like 20 years, they didn't meet over the summer to talk about it. So it seemed like the decisions were made much more quickly than in prior years. But I, I just encourage you, as you talk about the finances, because the referendum was put to a vote with that link to CPI in place. And then it disappeared, which is what has made it frankly more difficult for important equity work to be done. And, you know, any of the other programming that I know you're a really strong advocate for.
Yeah, that certainly hasn't been brought to me as the obstacle for doing equity work. So, you know, we, we, it's always important to, to understand all different aspects of a, of a contract and of budget decisions. I think, you know, as we look at the way we take the big budget to like, what does this mean in the lived experiences of folks? That's where I think we're, we're, we're hoping to get some more information than the board has requested. More information from Cabinet about, you know, where they see places that can be adjusted and where, and I think this thought, this thought exchange, I think that's what it's officially called, will be a great opportunity for us to see what themes emerge. Because I think there's, you know, most people, when faced with, do you want to cut things you care about, are going to say no, right? But the choice isn't like, oh, so then we won't, right? There's going to have to be cuts. And so we're going to have to have a higher level of discourse about what, as a community, we value most and what are the things that, as a community, we are willing to accept in order to prioritize those things. And I think that that's an important part of the, the budget process coming up, is for folks to engage and say, you know, my non-negotiables are this and this. And, and, you know, knowing, as you know, from being on the board, Richard, they, it's not that there's one opinion in town, right? There are passionate advocates on this, on all sides of every issue. But it's going to be really important for us to see, see, you know, where, where we have the bandwidth and, and where we have to make tough decisions. It's, you know, the conversations we've had with administration is, don't come to me and defend what you have. Come tell me what, what we, what we can do with less and what we can cut. Like, we, we, cuts have to happen. So we want to make sure that we're having, being as productive as possible with our conversations to make sure that, and, and as transparent as possible for folks to attend our, our board meetings, our finance meetings to, to know what the decision-making process really looks like.
Yeah, I appreciate all of that and I wish the board well in working through all those issues.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you all for coming. I'm going to, I'm going to turn it off, turn it off now. And we've got another interview set for 8:00 PM this evening. So if you'd like to join us again, we're going to have, I believe, Joseph Helfer in, also from the D65 School Board, to, to answer, to answer some questions as well. So thank you all for coming and thank you, Biz.
Thank you so much for the opportunity, I really appreciate it. I, you know, this, letting people know who you are in a remote setting, it's kind of complicated. And so I welcome all the opportunities to share with people. You know, one thing I like to say is, you should not be surprised by any decision I make on the board. I'm, I'm very consistent on the things that I value and I will communicate to folks and let people know what the, what the guiding principles are for me in the decision-making, so that it's never, it's never a surprise. And it's really, you know, it's really important for us to be as transparent as possible, so people can make an informed decision about who they want to represent them.
All right, well, thank you so much for coming, have a, have a great day.
All right, you too, take care.